We will begin with the opening statements and as indicated earlier, Alan will make the first statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming this evening. Oops. Guess we are going to use them. Gray light, we're good. Thank you all for coming this evening. Hopefully this evening you're going to be able to hear some very definitive answers to some probing questions. Where all six candidates will share their thoughts, not in a philosophical sense, but in a concrete sense of what they would or would not do. We'll probably talk about fracking, we'll probably talk about fests, we'll probably talk about infrastructure, all of those things you would expect in a candidate's forum. But quite honestly, none of that is really important unless we take care of one group in our community, and that's the children of this community. Besides this vote, you have one other opportunity to vote this spring, and that's on issue one for children's services. If we can't take care of our children, doesn't matter pub fests and fracking and things like that, we haven't taken care of, I guess what I'd call the least among us. Two requests, listen closely tonight and pick the best three candidates, but before you make that choice, two weeks from today, check yes for issue one, and let's take care of our children. And I would hope and I would think the other five candidates up here would agree with that thought. Again, my name is Alan Swank, I'm a 36-year resident of Athens. Came here in 1979 for what was to be one year graduate school. One turned to two as it does for so many Ohio University students, two turned to five, couple of kids, three grandkids, and Athens is now home. One of the things you're probably wondering is, what have I done? What are the characteristics that I could present today to show leadership which is required of council? I'll outline four. When my daughter was in first grade, I was vice president of East PTO. That was a full-time job. From there, I moved on to a three-term presidency of the Green and White Club, and helped grow that organization to almost 1,000 memberships. Then I was a two-term president of FINA, the Far East Side Neighborhood Association, and most recently for the last nine years, I've managed a unit of our company that's larger than the city of Athens. Thank you.
Jennifer is next with your opening statement, please.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for always hosting these forums. I've attended quite a few as an interested community member and an Athens voter. I'm glad to join the other candidates tonight in sharing our passions and ideas for Athens here at the Community Center. I'm a modest person and an introvert, so campaigning for public office has provided me with new challenges. But I realized recently that campaigning for public office is not unlike a job interview, albeit a job interview with many potential supervisors. You hired me for the position of Athens City Council Member-at-Large two years ago, and I hope that you will vote to reelect me to that position this spring. I was born in Athens at O'Leary Hospital because it was a progressive institution, being the only hospital in southeastern Ohio to allow men in the delivery room at the time. I grew up in Jackson, Ohio. I earned a bachelor's degree in journalism from Otterby College, a master's degree in international affairs from Ohio University, and an occupational certificate from Hawking College in massage therapy. After spending time in big cities and overseas, I decided to come home to Ohio, and Athens is the place I chose to call home. This is the place where I have chosen to raise a family and build community. As a servant leader, I lead through service. I'm always happy to roll up my sleeves and get a little dirty cleaning our city, pulling garlic mustard with someone like Phil Cantino, or planting trees. Sunday after running my first half marathon, I refueled before heading out with my son to mulch and weed the beds right out front here, along with local Girl Scouts, project plant volunteers, Ohio University students, and others as part of the annual Athens Beautification Day. I began my career in community service as a student leader and have served as an AmeriCorps, VISTA, and Peace Corps volunteer. In my years in Athens, I've served as past president of the Friends of the Athens Public Library, a Leche League leader, a board member for Live Healthy Appalachia, and a volunteer with numerous other community organizations. As a city council member, I serve on several commissions and several committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next comment is by Joan.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing the forum. My name is Joan Fernandsky, I reside at 56 Mount Street. I have two delightful daughters who attended Athens High School, graduated from Ohio University. I'm also blessed with two wonderful grandchildren. I hold a Bachelor of Arts in Anthropology and a Master of Arts in International Studies. I was one of the founding members of the West Side Community Association and have served as its co-chair and treasurer. As an active member of this neighborhood association, I have worked on and supported projects that have had a positive result citywide, including extending sidewalks on Columbus Road, graffiti and litter removal, wellhead protection, plan initiative, building the Schaefer Street brick wall, and landscaping at Arts West. I have been a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for six years and have served on several city council ad hoc committees. My work on the board and the committees has strengthened my understanding of the Athens City Code, kept me informed of changing conditions in Athens, and allowed me to develop a working relationship with the city administration. I was a worker owner of Crumb's Bakery for five years and served as general manager and bookkeeper for three of those years. I have volunteered for Democratic election campaigns and local initiatives. My platform includes citizen-involved planning, protecting vital neighborhoods, and supporting smart business. I recently retired from Ohio University, and I would like to commit my time, experience, and expertise to public service as your city council at-large representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Our next opening comment is from Maxine.
Hello, I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for having me at this forum. I have a long history of working for the city and the county of Athens. I started in 1983 by helping to push the county commissioners to finally realize Dave Renan's dream of a bicycle path from Athens to Nelsonville. I have been on the BikeWay Advisory Committee since it finally started and was built. I was on the Board of Directors of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau for 12 years, serving as the treasurer and the president. At the end of my term, I took a position as financial advisor at the Visitors Bureau. I was also on the Board of Directors for Enterprise Development Corporation for 18 years, where I was the treasurer for 12 of those years. EDC was a small business administrator that handled 33 counties in Ohio. They oversaw the administration of Athens County and city revolving loan funds. And as a member of the board, we would go over each one of the loans and decide whether they were going to work or not, the businesses that were starting up. I have close ties to the City Engineers Office through work with Bob Eichenberg and then later with Andy Stone. We have worked together on pedestrian and bicycle plans for Athens. I have been on City Council's Transportation Committee for five years. I raised two sons here. They went from west elementary school through high school. One of them went on to get his degree at OU. I have a bachelor's degree at OU, and I have recently completed a master's in counseling, again from OU. I have owned and operated Cyclopath Bicycle Shop at the same location in Athens since 1983. I have a pro-- thank you.
The next statement will be by Peter.
I have a proven record. That's all I want to scream in there. Great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Katsas, and I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and giving everybody a chance to speak tonight. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born here, raised here, and I believe it's an interesting perspective because I could probably count on my hands how many people from my high school graduating class were able to make a living here and stay here. So it's an interesting, you know, position that I have. Not only that, but being in business, I worked for Max, I employed Alan's son for a while, and so, you know, it's a small town, isn't it? It definitely, you know, everybody. And the skill set that I learned from being in business, I feel like it's important. I always talk with my employees about the power of small business, and I try to tell other people too about that, so tonight you guys get to hear about it. My, you know, when I first opened up, it wasn't something that you really thought about, but after a while you realize that you're providing jobs and you're providing a service. And what really did it for me was five years ago when we purchased a building that was an ISO, it was condemned, it was empty, it sat on Stimson Avenue, and we took it and rehabbed it and repurposed it to our use, but at the same time kind of kept the history of it so that we could retain some of that heritage and still teach people about what our area was like 100 years ago when the Athens Brick Company was a major employer. So that, along with my being a good steward of the community, all the volunteer work that I have done, I believe that that makes me an extremely strong candidate for being on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter and Mike will make their final opening statement.
I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum tonight. I want to say good evening, my name is Mike Cannaberry, and I am a candidate running to retain my seat on the Athens City Council at large. I want to thank the Athenian voters for being here and watching this forum at home. I have lived and worked here for close to 35 years. Retiring from the Athens County Engineers Department, my employment with the Athens County Engineers Department included grant writing, contract writing, putting the specs together for bids, roads, and bridge projects, as well as equipment. I'm a certified bridge inspector through ODOT. I was instrumental in the development of GIS for Athens County and AVL for our vehicles. I've been married for 35 years, I have two children, a son and a daughter, both serving in the United States Air Force, and three grandchildren. I was a board member and past president of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission, the Athens County Local Emergency Planning Commission, former SEAMS and Tri-County Community Action Agency, ATSI Local 103, and I'm NIM certified. From these groups, I have learned the skills in the following areas of collaboration, policy development, being a good listener, and I learned an eclectic approach to problem solving. I will stand up for my convictions on the city council and for the concerns of the citizens of Athens. I'm running to retain my seat on Athens City Council because I care and I have a passion for view the citizens of Athens. I want our development, redevelopment, and revitalization challenges to be carefully managed using sustainable building practices. I want to make sure with our growth that is a smart growth, environmentally friendly, preserving our open spaces with parks and recreation trails. We have a contract upcoming with AEP on the trimming of trees, and I want to help implement the best practice for this and work on language that benefits the city of Athens and its residents. And to continue to work with Athens and its residents and our aging infrastructure with the water and sewer lines appropriately affixing potholes and repairing and replacing our sidewalks correctly through our neighborhoods. Thank you, and be sure to vote and retain. Mike Cannaberry, you may be fifth.
Thank you, Mike. We will now begin our questioning from the media panel, and the first question will be asked by Alexandra Newman from the New Political. And the order of candidates answering that question will be the order in which they just gave their opening statements. So Alexandra in the first question, and Alan will be the first person to answer the question.
Okay, so mine's a bit of a two-parter. There we go. Okay, so mine's a two-parter. What is your biggest strength and how will you use it as a member of city council? And what is your biggest weakness and how will you overcome it as a member of city council?
I always like to end on a positive, so I'm going to do the weakness first if that's okay. I come from a family, mother and father, neither whom graduated from college. Each of them went to school for a semester. My mother was valedictorian of her class in the hills of southwestern Kentucky. My father was fourth in his class, but they valued education. In fifth grade, I got a C in handwriting, first and only C I ever got. And for six weeks, I sat at that table and practiced my handwriting until it became acceptable to my mother. I think what was instilled in me through that lesson was excellence is expected. Somewhere along the line, sometimes I confuse trying with excellence. Nobody fails on purpose. Terry and I each have a document in our room, in our extra room upstairs, 12 things we want to do this year, and one of them is to be more tolerant. So being brutally honest, that is my greatest weakness, but I'm working on it, and it's number three on that list if you want to go up to 40 Avon and see it. I don't look at problems, I look at issues as opportunities. And hopefully we'll talk about the fest later today, but I look at that as an opportunity, the positive side of things. We have this issue, what can we do with it to better our neighborhoods and our city? Thank you.
Jennifer will next answer the question.
Thank you. I believe one of my greatest strengths is something that I've mentioned already, and that is listening and communication. I learned early on when campaigning that it's important to put others' opinions before your own in this position, because we all have opinions and we're all eager to share them, but what matters is representing the opinions of other people. And so sometimes my opinions need to take a backseat, and I need to consider other viewpoints first. So I believe that I'm able to listen and hear other perspectives and consider all sides of an issue, whether it's something that I agree with or not, and carefully consider a lot of different input before making a decision. As far as weakness goes, sometimes I can be a little overeager to get certain things done, and in my eagerness, I can neglect proper procedures, I might step on a few toes every now and then, or forget to dot the i's and cross the t's. So eagerness can sometimes be a weakness for me.
Joan.
Oh, I don't want to copy anybody else's here, so I made up my own list. I think that I am a competent mediator. Often, I get stuck in situations where two people are batting heads, and I, in many cases, have been able to diffuse the situation. I also like to dig deep into an issue rather than just looking at the service and saying, "It looks okay, I'm going to ask the question, why? Is it like okay, or why shouldn't we do it, or why should we do it?", and do some research so that I have a full breadth of the picture. Weaknesses, I'm not going to admit to anything, except that I do tend to overcommit myself. So I say, "Okay, I'll do it." And then, and that's really a bad thing, because whatever gets shoved down to the bottom of the list is not going to get completed, and then I'm going to feel guilty. And in 15 seconds, I will shed that guilt and pass the mic on.
Maxine.
I think one of my biggest strengths is my ability to problem solve and to look at things from multiple perspectives, to try to engage a lot of different people's opinions before I consolidate it into a whole. And I think also that my record of integrity in the workplace has been one of my biggest strengths. Weaknesses, sort of like Joan's, I get very involved and very myopic sometimes about the projects I'm on, and I can be a bad time management person, and sometimes get tripped up with time. That's all I have to say, so this time I'm early.
Peter.
I would say, you know, the biggest thing for me is I know this town. You know, the conversations that I've had in the last few months, I had one with Bill Bias, and Bill said, "Well, you know, back in the 80s, you know, I was fighting for brick streets." And I said, "I was there, I grew up on Elmwood Place, they were, you know, they were going to tear that up and do a sewer project, they were going to pave it." And that didn't happen, you know, thanks to Bill. The, I had a meeting here at the Community Center with Andrew Chickie, and he was kind of going through the process of the university when they were doing the building Ping Center and closing people out of Grover, and that we needed a, and I said, "I voted for that, you know, we need a community center." And I said, "I voted for that." That's, you know, so it's exciting to have the opportunity, maybe further, the progress of the city. My weakness is I am taking a crash course right now, trying to figure out everything that the city needs, requires. There are a lot of people out there that are willing to help. That's what I've come across and have been extremely surprised to find in this whole process, so that I feel like that's going to help me with the learning curve and coming, you know, hopefully bridging that gap, so that I feel like that's probably my biggest challenge. Thank you.
Mike.
Thank you. It's a good question, Alex, and thank you for that. And that's one of the things I can bring to councils, the many years of experience that I have in the grant writing, contract writing, and the implementation of the projects that I was involved in. We look at a lot of things that are happening in the city of Athens right now with the infrastructures that we're doing, Richland Avenue project's going on, the upcoming Stimson Avenue project, and the East State Street project. And one of the things that I can do is that when I look at plans, I know what I'm looking at. I know what them details are, and I can present my opinions to it and raise the concerns that need to be raised with it. When we fill out for the grants, when we fill out for the projects and we put them out to bid, I'm able to look at the cost estimates, and I'm able to determine whether that cost is too low or whether it's too high, and that we can put them in line with the proper procedure that they need to be in. Weaknesses, and I hate to comment on somebody else's answer, but, you know, it's, and I have to say, it's like with Joan's, is overcommitment. I commit myself too much, and I actually run out of time. So, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Our next question from the media will be from Connor Morris of the Athens News, the print versions.
I have print versions.
He wrote print on his card.
Ask for the medium and so does the committee. Thank you very much. So, hello, no, it's not. Hello? No. Is this one? Hello? Okay, great. So, at this last November's election, city voters approved a ban on fracking, basically oil and gas drilling, fracking and related activities within the city limits. My question to everybody here tonight is, would you support the Athens fracking ban in the face of a legal challenge from somebody who would wish to have an oil and gas drilling operation within the city? And if so, to what extent would you be willing to expend city resources to fight such litigation?
And Mike will answer that question first.
Thank you for the question. And answer to it, I have a daughter that lives in Oklahoma City, and they started fracking many years ago there, and the problems that she's facing right now is the earthquakes that they're having out there, which is numerous that you really hardly ever read about. She's had numerous water lines that have been broken within her property, and she's had to have repaired. Yes, I'm against fracking, I said, because I'm concerned about our drinking water, and with water is life, and so we have to have that. My personal opinion is, me myself, yes, I would be personally opposed to fracking. From the city council standpoint, I would rely on our law director, because that's who we have to rely on for our legal advice. She tells us that, "Don't fight it, Ben." I have to listen to her, and that's what we will do. Personally, myself, yes, I would adamantly oppose it.
Maxine will be the next person to answer that question.
I'm also against fracking, especially within the city limits. There has been no proven safety for disposal of waste and the chemicals used for the fracturing. There has been seismic activity demonstrated because of the activity in the shale beds, and I think personally and the council, I, this town has voted not to have fracking. I think the city and the representatives, you know, the people of the city have made it clear, they don't want it. And that's who I would represent on council, so of course I would listen to the citizens of the city.
Alan.
That's a great question. The reason I feel it's a great question, it delves into three areas, morals, ethics, and fiscal responsibility. As a council member, it's very, very important that we balance our own personal moral and ethical beliefs with what is the law. Mike hit the nail on the head. Neither one of us are attorneys, and I would think we would need to defer to the city law director as to, one, the chances of that suit passing, and secondly, the cost to the taxpayers. That said, what puzzles, amazes me more than anything, why are we even talking about fracking? Why aren't we talking about renewable energy? Why are we drilling everywhere when we should be using solar like we use over here, or perhaps wind like I saw in a wind farm in Pennsylvania? For the immediate future though, we need to eliminate the picture I saw when I drove back from Pennsylvania. Four large trucks filled with brine headed for Athens County. There's absolutely no reason why Athens County should be the septic tank for Pennsylvania or anywhere else. So yeah, fracking, not my cup of tea, but I'm going to have to balance those feelings with what the law director said we should do.
Peter.
Oops, sorry. Got the order mixed up, huh?
Okay. So, you know, right off the bat, water protection is key, and so we have to do that by any means. I mean, if this, if it's coming down the pipe, we have to do whatever we can to protect our environment. That being said, I don't know what we are able to do as city council. You know, one of the things I've learned so far is we don't have a ton of power. So it's, you know, we might not be the group that's going to be able to do it, but there are a lot of community members, I would lean heavily on Heather Cantino and her group to, you know, really help us with the legal end, if the city is going to be able to help. I think we I think we need to just kind of band together and try to figure out what, what type of avenues that we have. The injection wells scare me the most. Those are the ones that I see no, there's nothing, why would you, we didn't, we didn't want the trash from New York City. So why are we taking this stuff, which seems to be a lot more caustic and can cause a lot more damage? So, that's, I could keep going on, but it's going to just keep saying the same thing. So, thank you.
Joan is the next person to answer that question.
Well, I'm totally opposed to fracking, hydraulic fracking, and the injection wells. I think that water is such a valuable resource that, as a city council person, regardless, if a proposal was presented to city council and the law director said, I think that we're not going to be able to go forward with this to prevent this particular event from happening, I believe many people on city council would work their butt off to find an alternative way to go about doing it. Because where there is a will, in the past, in many issues I've worked with, there is always a way to get to the right answer. So, when it comes to water, having lived in West Virginia for many years on a primitive farm in hauled water, until you've done that, it's, I think it would be hard to imagine how precious every little drop is and how little you want to waste. And yet, we're allowing these companies to come in and perhaps waste our water. So, I'm willing to follow the law, but I'm willing to go the extra mile to find a way to go beyond that point. Thank you.
And Jennifer.
Thank you. I'm the geek that pointed out our city well field as we ran past it Sunday morning. I'm the child of parents who successfully fought off an injection well in southeastern Ohio when I was just a toddler. I've dragged these two to countless protests and will continue to do so when necessary. This is an issue on which I do not see balance. If our bill of rights is challenged, because we did not simply pass a ban on fracking, we passed a bill of rights declaring our right as citizens to clean water. That right is, we have a primacy of rights in that department. And I don't care if someone says to me, you do not have the right to challenge this law. There comes a time where we have to stand up and say these laws are unjust, because our state laws are not protecting us. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources is not protecting our natural resources. So we, as citizens, have declared our rights, and we will protect those rights despite what the law may say, because our rights are important. So, in answer, I believe any expenditure may be necessary on this, and fiscal responsibility takes a backseat to protecting our water supply and our future.
Thank you. The next media question will be asked by Sarah Broomfield of the Athens Messenger. And it will go first to Peter.
The green light is on, I swear. Anyway, if elected to council, is there a specific area of expertise or committee that you would prefer to work on, and why?
Conversations that I've had so far, parks and rec, that seems to be a standout, mostly because I utilize a lot of, a lot of the services with my, with my seven-year-old daughter. And that I, I spend a lot of time with the, you know, actually bringing the trail system that we currently have to fruition. I sat on a, on a board that was, that was headed up, well, I was asked by Mayor Rick Abel to be on a, on a board that basically got all the property across the, the street connected. And so, I could, I could see that I would definitely be, be helped there. You know, the big thing for me is, of course, I would like to really learn the budget. And I feel that my business background, you know, working with numbers, you know, to keep my, my system afloat, I think that I can easily transfer a lot of that, even though it's, you know, commercial, going to a, going to a city. I feel that I can definitely offer some, some help there. So those are, those are the two that I'm, I'm thinking about, but really, I think it's, it's going to come down to what, what other people think. Because I really need to lean on, on everybody else to have them help guide me in the right direction. Thank you.
Jennifer will take this question next.
Thank you, Sarah. As you probably know, I serve on the city council transportation committee, as well as the service and safety committee, the Athens Shade Tree Commission, the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and the Bharti Hills Regional Transportation Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Board. When I began as a city council member, I certainly did not see myself as an expert on transportation or city services and safety. But this is a learning experience. We all go from being citizens to being more active participants in our local government. And so, my passion for active transportation has led me to being an active member of our transportation committee and actively advocating every step of the way for more sidewalks, more lanes of bike, bikeway, more, more access to people who are using alternative means of transportation, more sustainable, active means of transportation, and public transit in our city. So, you could say, transportation has become a passion for me. And I'm excited to see our city becoming ever more friendly to people who are walking, bicycling, getting around, any, any way they can. So, thank you.
And Mike will next address this question.
Actually, again, because of overcommitment, actually all of them, I would serve only all, but you don't have enough time to do that, to honestly work on each one of them. But I'm also on the service safety committee, along with Steve Patterson, who also is running for mayor. And I want to go back to something on the, on the brine. A lot of people may not know this, but back in the early nineties, we used to actually put brine on our roadways, in Athens County. We actually used to put brine on our roadways. It was instrumental in working with Roxanne Graft to stop this practice. And we did. We stopped using cinders on our roadways because of the coal dust that would, the big plume of coal dust that would rise from it. And we stopped that. So there was a lot of things that, environmentally friendly, that we tried to do within the county that, that was implemented. Brine on roads, I, you know, it was a very bad thing then, and now we're injecting them into wells. That's going to destroy our, our drinking water. These are things I'm passionate about. I also was one of the first ones that took a culvert out, out on Lad Ridge before the lady barricaded herself to stop the flow of brine water. And I took the culvert out and stopped them from coming in, and was ordered to have to put it back in, just because we're very passionate about that. Thank you.
Maxine.
Well, with my history of being on a lot of different government committees and boards of directors, I, my first passion would be the finance committee. I am also a big advocate for the sports and rec department and the arts. And, you know, it's, it is, it's, it's pick and, you have to see what the different places are, but finance would be my biggest, my first target, but I would not give up the transportation committee. That's it. To whom next?
Me.
To Alan.
Your question is kind of like asking a kid, what's on your Christmas wish list? You know you can't have it all, but you'd like to. As a council person, you serve a lot of constituencies, and you put your finger in a lot of different pots. But after spending some time on the city website the last week, and delving into the essence of Athens Project, I think that would probably be my first interest and focus at this point in time. I guess I didn't really understand what that essence of Athens Project or process was until I watched and reread and watched again and picked up this statement. It says, "Strategic design plan for economic enhancement and community competitiveness." I think we all agree, any community can be enhanced a bit, whether it's better sidewalks, finishing off a landscaping project, turning this into a 25 mile an hour zone out here. And anytime you have competitiveness, all parties get better. The first question was asked of us today, what is your strength? And I got a third of a way through that. But I think my strength, as it relates to this, is identifying the opportunity, developing the plan, and executing a solution. And with this guideline in the essence of Athens, that's a challenge I'd like to undertake.
And Jennifer.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Sarah. I have looked at the city webpage a gazillion times, and I totally blanked out on the committee names. So sometimes you can know too much, but with a little assistance from Jennifer here. Planning and development. I think planning is crucial. Everything else flows from it. And development, whether it's within the neighborhoods, via the code, through small businesses, I think that would be my preference, but I would be more than willing and probably somewhat qualified to fill whatever vacant position came my way.
Thank you. Our next media question. It'll come from Susan Tebbin of W O U B. And Joan can keep the microphone, because she's the first person to answer that question.
The light comes on, but nothing happens. Is it on? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right.
It seems to go in and out.
I'll try to talk louder than usual. My question actually touches on something that Mr. Canterbury, oh, there it goes, Mr. Canterbury has been talking about, which is the infrastructure. We've been seeing a lot of work on Richland Avenue, we've been seeing a lot of work other places, obviously the winters brought potholes. So I wanted to see what your thoughts are on improving or maintaining the infrastructure that we know is aging in the city of Athens.
Well, that's actually happening right in my backyard. You know, the infrastructure is, is truly an issue. Obviously, nationwide infrastructure within our city. I sometimes think of public works as busy little bees or happy little ants, because they're out there working all the time. A lot of the bigger projects have been more in the focus, the Columbus Road, Richland Avenue, Union Street. And these consume a lot of money, and, and they are at least as important as a lot of the smaller infrastructure problems in some of the neighborhoods of them, walking the neighborhoods and talking to people. And there's some issues, smaller issues, that I think need addressed. I have a few of my own in particular. And so, but the question is how to spread the money, right? And set priorities. And I think that maybe I would have to be on city council, looking at the budget, looking at the numbers, looking at the proposals, and to be able to make... Time. Time.
All right. Maxine. Next person to ask the question.
The ideas, the concepts that are in the city's comprehensive plan and in the essence of Athens are being kept in line, and there are long-term goals that I've, I've talked to Andy Stone in the engineering department, and they are trying, they're constantly trying to catch up to the needs of this town and the hundred-year-old infrastructure. With, I know everybody is, that I've talked to, going through neighborhoods, it's like, well, yeah, but I've been waiting for years for my street to be done. And I think that if, if more people went on the city's websites, I'm sure, you know, that they could look and see there are estimated times available for when they believe they're going to be able to get different sections of the city repaved, potholes, drainage, you know, new sewer systems. And it's, it's a constant fight, because everything is so old and needs repair. And I think that if we can just keep moving forward and have someone like Andy Stone, who can keep getting grants, and be able to afford these things, that will be, it takes time, but it's getting done.
And Peter, sorry, next one responded.
So, I believe that Andy Stone is, is doing the best he can with, with what he has. So I believe that the city is trying to, to work with what they have, but the pot is not, it's not getting any bigger, thanks to the state. So, you know, we just have to get, get creative. You know, Maxine mentioned grants, that definitely seems to be the direction, and they seem to be able to secure them. So, all you can do is just hope, you know, that you don't have the, the big failure, and then all of a sudden, you're going backwards, you know, fixing something that, that really, you know, just gave out before you had a chance to get to it. But overall, I think that the, that department, you know, the engineer department is, is doing a great job. And, you know, the issue that we have here is, you know, we're such a free staw, and everybody sees the potholes because they're on the surface. And it's hard sometimes to go in and just fix the potholes when you know that you're doing a complete street replating, repaving in another year. So sometimes you just, you let it go. You know, I, I know I drive up and down Madison all the time, and bum, bum, you know, it's, you could, yeah, it doesn't number on things. But I know they're out there and they're trying, and I think they're doing, doing a great job. So I, I believe that as time goes on, they, they will get that stuff addressed, and hopefully add additional infrastructure on top that people can enjoy, the complete streets. Thank you.
Mike.
Thank you, Susan. It's a great question, and hopefully one that, that we'll be able to shed a little bit of a light on. And it all starts with a plan. You have to have the cart before the horse on these situations. Sometimes we don't understand that when we look at roadways, roadways was built where they just happened. There wasn't planned, they was, they just happened. They started out with a walk, they started out with a trail, they started out with a horse and a buggy. So the base in these roadways was not there to handle the type of traffic that we have today. In talking with Andy, these are things that I've been talking and, and working with him and planning and trying to help balance different projects that we can look at and do. And what he's trying to do is get the water, the sewer lines replaced, then put the base into the road, then do the project in a whole. That way, we don't have to go back, and all of a sudden, we pave a road, or we concrete a road, and then it deteriorates, because we didn't do the sewer line, or we didn't replace the water line. So these are things that we're trying to do, is get the cart before the horse. And again, the pie is only so big, there's only so much money to deal with. And when you have a lot of projects that you're trying to do and trying to work with, there's only so much money. And when you apply for grants, you know, there's only matching funds that you have. So it may be an 80-20 split, or it may be a 90-10, but any... But anymore, the splits are getting bigger because the state, the federal governments, when you're going for these grants, the cost allocations are tough to get. And so that's what we're planning, that's what we're working with. Thank you.
So we do have a five-year capital improvement plan in place and I think we're about due for review of that plan. When I first ran for council and was hearing about everybody about potholes, I thought, well, we need to have a plan, don't we? And so I'm happy that we now do have a plan in place and I'm not taking credit for that plan. That plan is a result of our excellent, the excellent work coming out of our public works department. And I believe that our city administration does an excellent job of leveraging resources to be able to accomplish major projects, whether it's Richland Avenue or the upcoming East State Street improvements, which I'm very excited about because it's a spot that I walk on daily, I drive on daily. I cross the street with my children and worry for their safety. So I think it's also important to remember that a lot of these resources that we're talking about, they get called grants, but they're not really grants. They're federal, our tax dollars that we need to get back into this community. They're called grants, but they're the gas tax dollars. And so that's money that we're entitled to and we need that money to improve our infrastructure. So I look forward to continuing to work with the city administration on reviewing and revising our five-year capital improvement plan and look forward. Thank you.
And Alan.
This is a topic we have around our dinner table on a very, very regular basis, the condition of the town. I remember back in the late 80s, early 90s, I visited my brother in Dallas, Texas, in a section of town with these big McMansions. And I'd say, wow, that's a nice house. My brother would say, so? And I'm like, what do you mean, so? He says, there's no furniture in that house. We refer to those people as house poor. Our people who work on our infrastructure do the best job they can with the resources available. What we have to stop doing, though, is building things we can't take care of. We put in a great roundabout and had a great plan, we thought, but now the landscaping, we can't keep up with. It would be a full-time job for several people. We probably put the wrong bushes in. We found that out last weekend on beautification day. Get those bushes out, put some bushes in that don't require the amount of time and energy, we'll be able to keep up with it. But before we build anything else, I'm not talking about repairing what needs to be repaired. We can't go on a deferred maintenance plan 20 years from now, have everything fall in. But before we build anything else, we need to put in the budget, a plan, to be able to take care of it. If we can do that, I think we can keep up with the personnel we have. Thank you.
And thank you, media representatives, for your questions. It's now time for questions from the audience. And Jennifer will be the first person to answer this first question from the audience. What are your priorities in terms of long-term planning for the city of Athens?
That's a good question. I think long-term planning, we need to look at, you know, where we want to be as a city. And there are some important things, important questions that need to be answered. For me, one of the major priorities, again, is transportation and accessibility for folks who are using alternate means of transportation. We need to acknowledge and celebrate those who use their own two feet or bicycles or public transit. And we need to continue to support those modes of transportation. And I would like to celebrate the work that our current mayor has done in that department. I was really impressed at a recent presentation by Athens Transit about the growth in ridership. And I'm eager to maybe ride the bus tomorrow in celebration of Earth Day. So transportation is a major priority for me. Of course, infrastructure is also important, continuing to improve infrastructure wherever we can and using the complete streets model whenever we're digging up the streets to improve the infrastructure under those streets. The Athens Farmers Market is another major, important issue for the long-term health and wellness of our community. So I think we need to work together on supporting that vital piece of our community.
I think one of the things that I would like to see is revisiting the master plan. You know, it's been a while since it came out and I would like to see if there's anything that we need to update in that. Code, everybody talks about code. I think code needs to be revisited. The way that we build cities now is different and we have to, we have to keep up with the other cities. You know, the thing that I always, always have seen, you know, I've seen it in my family is everybody talks about how Athens is a transient town. And with the students, yes, they come in, you know, the majority of them, four, five, six years, you know, they're, and they're gone. But it's the same with families, too. My dad came here in 69 and, you know, was gone by 96 after he put his 30 years in. You know, he found that there were other places that he wanted to go. We lost that community member and I feel like that happens a little bit more often here. So I think that overall, I would like to, I'd like to figure out how we can, we can encourage a multi-generational community in the city. I think that's important for families, it's important for children. I know that my daughter enjoys her grandpa who lives only a couple blocks away and I see the struggles of people that don't have those families close by. Thank you.
I will repeat the question. What are your priorities in terms of long-term planning for the city of Athens? And Mike is the next person to answer that question.
I think as I answered earlier in my opening statement, I think I want to look at, you know, making sure that our growth is that it's smart growth. To make sure that it's environmentally friendly. These are things that we have to do. You know, we've, I've heard a lot of comments as I'm walking the streets and I'm listening and talking with the constituents that are out there and the residents that live there and are talking about some of the seniors. I have issues with things that the seniors are talking to me about. One of the things that we've done was worked with Michelle on the buses. The transportation, we're getting two new buses that are called lowriders. And which are more senior-friendly, they're more handicapped accessible. We're wanting to look at sidewalks because they're having problems when they're walking on sidewalks. Street lighting on our city streets. I said, you go some places, you may have a street light on the corner or there may not be a street light at all. And some of the senior citizens that like to walk in the evenings are scared to walk because they can't see and they're scared that the sidewalks are in such disarray that they're going to trip and fall and, you know, as brittle bones go, they tend to break. So these are things that I want to look at and work with to try to help accomplish. Thank you.
And Joan is our next one.
Well, I'd like to say two things first before I get to priorities. And that is, I think that a planning group or consortium needs to come together in the city of Athens to create a vision of what or how we see Athens in 10 years. And to allow the city to bring into the city those things that we have envisioned for our city, rather than having things plopped in. It's kind of like spot zoning. We see a lot of this, spot this and spot that. And this comes into community and the community doesn't like it. It comes in downtown, downtown. Maybe merchants or residents disagree with it. So I think we need to have a plan designed, a visionary plan, so that we can create the town via the plan rather than have bits and pieces dropped into our town. And sometimes we end up with mishmash of things. And secondly, I would like to say that the planning process needs to include as many diverse parts of the citizenry as is possible. Thank you.
And Alan.
Since we're in city wreck, the first place I'd start is the city pool. We only build these once every 40 or 50 years and we need to get this one right. It needs to serve everybody from seniors and others who want to lap swim to a little three-year-old who for the first time can let go of mom or dad's hand and stand and play in the water. So let's start with the pool. Secondly, the farmer's market. I would bet cash money that half the people in this room, when they have a visitor from out of town, one of the first places they take them and one of the places they're most proud of is our farmer's market and rightfully so. We're running out of time at the mall, we need a solution. Third thing would be what we're going to do with the West Union Street Fire District. I have some very specific plans for what I would like to do and hopefully we'll get to those later in this discussion. But we need to make that a viable place because that's a valuable part of our uptown area. I think we need to improve communications and relations with Ohio University and that includes sharing resources. Do we need two police departments? I don't know. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. As part of that planning, perhaps we need to take a look at that. We supply the fire service, they gave us $50,000 for a truck and we'll continue to do that. Are there other resources that we can share with the university? And finally, something very, very simple. Most of you have texts, get texts. I would love when we have a boil order that a text goes out to the entire city that you shouldn't drink the water today if you happen to live on this street or on those days when trash is delayed so we don't have trash sitting out a day late or a day early.
And Maxine.
My priorities for long-term would be the maintenance of the health and the welfare of the community with wellhead protection plans. And to make sure that we don't have fracking waste dumped in our water. I know it's, nobody wants it in their backyard, but we don't want it in our backyard for sure. I know that the plans that are already in process for the, there are development plans for the city of Athens that have been out for a while and they do need to be revisited, but I think they're moving in a positive direction. The essence of Athens is a long-term, long-range plan that is being followed and they're trying to implement the suggestions within the essence of Athens. I think these are positive developments. I think the community input for the swimming pool and the, I've, on my walking tours of the city, I have had a lot of people ask me, I put my taxes in for this, when is it going to happen? And it's a long process, but at least we can say that there are plans being developed. And as long as we can have community forums and town halls, I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience looks by the handwriting to be from a younger person who very straightforwardly asks, what do you think about the poor? And pool, oh, well. Yeah, the pool. Well, I, you know, some people need to practice their handwriting and I'm the first to say, like Alan, I should sit and practice my handwriting. So, okay, the pool, that's an L. Okay, what do you think about the pool? And that goes first to Alan.
Kind of hit on that.
You want to elaborate?
Let me put it in these terms. In 1981, if you haven't figured out by now, I used to be a history teacher. In 1981, I started playing softball in this town. Played for the Cats Den team. But now, back then, it was the Little Ritz, the Little Ritz team. And at that point in time, there were 18 teams in the men's league. There were another 12 teams in the men's over 35 league. Bruce is back there nodding his head. There was also a women's league. And there was also a co-ed league. And if I'm not mistaken, we had a church league, too. So you add up all those teams, you had well over 40 or 50 teams. Today in Athens, there is one league. My son-in-law plays in it. And my granddaughter calls it, well, that's boys and girls playing together. It's a co-ed league. What happened to participation in recreation in Athens, Ohio? This pool, which we won't get another one for 40 or 50 years. It's very important that we meet everybody's needs, particularly the young. Because if we get kids exercising when they're little, they're going to be in much better shape when they're old. So that's what I think about the pool. It's important and I'll buy a membership once I get a little tan on me.
Okay. Mike, the pool with an L at the end, what do you think about it?
I've studied on several meetings with the task force that's looking at the pool. Again, we've had a public forum on the pool where participants came in and gave their skill, what they would like to see. And again, the wants outweigh the cost or the money. So what the committee is trying to do now, they're trying to look and collaborate between all the ideas that was gave and put those together to come up with a good plan so that we can present to the city. And I'm all for the pool because, you know, when you drive down through here or you come down through here and you see the pool that we have right now and the people that attend it, it's very full most of the time. But you've got to keep the interest of the kids because they get very bored very quickly. So just have patience because it is being worked on, it is being done. It's just a process and just a matter of time. Thank you.
Joan.
Well, I'm a big fan of our current pool. My grandchildren come in this summer, I take them to swimming lessons. They love the pool. I think the most important thing is that whatever we construct inside, outside, both recreational lane swimming, that we make sure we have sufficient funds to hire contractor who will do us a stellar job. This pool has lasted a long time. And many things today are built to terminate much quicker than 30 years ago, 40 years ago. So whatever comes out of this pool scenario, inside, outside, let's just make sure we build the best we can build. Thank you.
Jennifer.
P O O L. So I think the pool is very important as a parent and as a community member who swims for recreation and fitness. And it's important to the health of our community and we're going to get one soon. So I'm very excited about that. I also realize we're not going to please everybody. I was not in Athens when this community center was built. But I know that there were a lot of different ideas that went into this and there were some ideas that were not actualized, were not accomplished. The same is going to happen with our pool, like it or not. We're probably not going to get a wave pool. We're probably not going to get, you know, as many water slides as some would like. But we're going to get a good pool and it's going to accommodate a lot of different people from our community, everybody who wants to use it. And it's going to be a good site, better than what we currently have. So I'm excited about that. I would like to see continued public participation and input in the process. I know that we have several members of the Arts Parks and Rec Advisory Board in the room. So talk to them and share your opinions because your opinions matter.
Maxine.
Well, it's hard to add very much new to what's been said. I mean, yes, we need a pool. And during the summer, we really need a pool. Because here's, you want your children to be outside and be active and not sitting inside because it's too hot to go outside to play. And this is one of the best forms of recreation. too hot to go outside to play, and this is one of the best forms of recreation for children during the heat in the summer because it just, it keeps them moving, and it's joyful. We do need a pool, and as most of the people here have agreed, we need the best pool that we can afford. And I know that limits things, and not everybody's going to be happy with what is the final project, but like the community center, there are a lot of people that do use this center, and I'm sure there will be a lot of people that use the pool.
And Peter.
Okay. Well, thank you for such an important question. I'll tell you, I do enjoy the pool. I guess if anybody wants a takeaway from tonight, I do love the pool. There's probably just two points that I want to probably just add to this one because I think across the board, everybody's probably already said everything. One is, this, these, these projects are kind of icing on the cake, and it's something that you can look forward and say, if we do do this right, this can be an attractor for people. You know, it can be a make or break sometimes when someone's looking to move into the community. So if we, if we do it correctly, there's a good chance that we can, we can help secure, you know, the best people for our community. The second thing is, and I, you know, I don't know how, how much it's been in consideration yet, because I attempted to go to one of the meetings, and they said it was closed session, and then somebody else said, well, you should have just gone, and I said, well, I don't, I don't just do that. But anyhow, I hope, I hope we're considering using some green, green building, you know, and try to make it as efficient as possible. All right. Thank you.
Yes, you're the last person to answer that question, and with six candidates, the time goes quickly, so we've run out of time for further questions from the audience. And it's now time for the closing comments from the candidates. These are limited to two minutes apiece, and we will begin the closing statements with Maxine.
In closing, I would again like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing this forum to be held and for me to participate. I have a proven track record of working for the city of Athens. With my experience, dedication, vision, and integrity, I will bring a vast background of knowledge and insight to Athens City Council. As an active community member and a small, small business owner for the past 32 years in Athens, I am committed to continuing the smart growth and infrastructure guidelines set forth by the comprehensive plans for Athens and to continue the service to our town. I ask for your vote, vote so that I may serve on city council. Thank you.
Our next statement will be from Peter.
All right. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for, for hosting this tonight and sticking me in the hot seat here for about an hour. This has been a new process for me. This has been an exciting last few months. It's, it's been a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed the process. When, when I went and collected my signatures, you know, I felt I had, I had a perspective, someone who's lived in three of the four wards, who's grown up here and has been through that process of, of growing up and having a community shape you. You know, I said, well, council could, might, might benefit from that, you know, and then, then adding my, my business experience and the ability that we've been able to create something kind of special down on Stimson Avenue, I said, well, I could, maybe that, that would be good, too. What has really surprised me by this whole process has been the conversations I've had with community members, with people currently working for, for, for the city, for people that are on council, former council members, former commissioners, current, I mean, I've talked with a lot of people, and I've, I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed hearing those perspectives, and I've enjoyed just, just the whole process. So I want to thank the city of Athens for once again providing me with, with another experience. You know, I'm, I'm really indebted to this community, and I would like to have the ability to, to serve on council. If I don't, I still will be volunteering my time and doing everything that I can to help the community that, that has given so much to me. Thank you.
And Jennifer, your closing statement, please.
Some of my goals as a council member for the next session include the realization of a city sustainability plan and helping to make Athens a healthier place to live, work, and play. I've been, I've enjoyed my time serving on the Environment and Sustainability Commission. As I mentioned earlier, one of my weaknesses is eagerness and sometimes impatience. So I often run into, feel like we're not making progress, but I know from having conversations with other people that we are making progress. And so I look forward to the time when we're able to look back and say, look how far we've come. And we can do that in a lot of respects on a lot of different issues, and this will soon be one of them. I will support energy efficiency upgrades and support the work of Upgrade Athens, and I'm glad to have been involved on the ground floor of organizing the Southern Ohio Public Energy Council. It's been a crash course in learning about energy issues, starting with knowing virtually zero to actually knowing how to read my electric bill now. So I'll continue to work on, on those issues as a city council member. I believe Athens is a town unlike any other in Ohio, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent its residents as we preserve and grow the qualities that keep so many of us here. Unique to southeast Ohio, Athens provides access to a vibrant food economy, public participatory art, amazing educational opportunities, abundant outdoor recreation, and the acceptance of different cultures, beliefs, and ideas. In the next few years, I hope to work with local government, business, and community leaders to help Athens develop more as a sustainable wellness and recreation destination.
Thank you. Alan, your closing statement, please.
I'd like to thank the League for having this and all of you coming out. And I'll tell you who I'd really like to thank, the five people sitting on either side of me. To run for public office and put yourself out there takes conviction, takes passion, takes a willingness to experience a win, maybe a loss. And as Pete said, I would think all six of us will continue in some capacity, win or We are all photographers today. Just about everyone in here has a smartphone, takes pictures. You go to towns, you visit, you take pictures. I fly into Washington, DC, I always get on the left side of the plane so I can take a picture of the Capitol, the White House, Washington Monument. What a great picture, particularly from 5,000 feet in the air. But do you ever wonder when people come to Athens, what pictures they take to share with their friends when they go back home? Think about it for a minute. I can think of a picture of White's Mill from the Union Street side across the river, particularly when the river's full and the water's cascading over those rocks. Maybe it's a picture of Lynn Hall upon the ridges on a beautiful May morning as the sun comes up. Or maybe, more recent picture, is that wonderful mural of the miners uptown on the side of Lucky's. Think about it. What are the pictures you think people would take? Well, some of the pictures that I envision people taking are pictures of a restored and renovated West Union pedestrian corridor and dining area. Right now, it's currently shut down to half. Why not experiment and see if we can prolong that situation? An uptown area with clean sidewalks, free of thousands of dark, nasty-looking pieces of chewing gum, and a new permanent farmer's market powered by the sun and accessible to all via East State Street of the Bike Path.
Thank you. Mike, your closing statement, please.
I also want to take the time to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I want to thank also the Athens City Central Committee members who voted for me to fill the vacant at-large seat based on my qualification and experience. I want to thank the Southeast Ohio Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, for their endorsement I just recently got from them. My goal is to continue coordinating with the city council, Ohio University, and the Athens community to continue building, growing, and embracing the partnerships already in existence, and develop new partnerships wherever possible. All I can say is, is you vote for qualifications, you vote for experience, and I'd appreciate your vote on May the 7th. Vote for Mike Canterbury, or maybe 5th, sorry. Don't go late. Vote early, vote often.
Joan, your, your closing statement, please.
Well, since my opening statement was so severe, I'll be sweet in my closing. What I love about Athens, well, first, people, and not just people, it's the diversity of people. It's a place where class structure breaks down, racial categories don't seem to exist. There's an incorporation here that is, it kind of creeps into you, and maybe that's why we stay here. And so I have a list of things, and I'm probably singing to the choir, but let me list my few things in categories: food, coffee, beer, trees, neighborhood gardens, and walking, movies, theaters, art projects, and hopefully, a city that will be known in the future for its solar projects, which would be one of my goals to work towards if elected to city council. Thank you all for coming.
And thank you for those closing statements. A few comments I would like to make. Again, I'm very sorry for my late and dramatic arrival. I probably gave poor Ed a heart attack, but I made it eventually, and I'm very glad I did. It's been, as Ellsworth always says when he moderates on this, these occasions, it's been a wonderful exercise in civil discourse and in democracy.